Ready? Greg?
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Mark, good morning.
I'd like to call to order this morning's meeting of the ARPB. And with that, I'd like to ask Renee for the roll call, please.
Mr. Lyons.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Roach.
Here.
Vice Chairman Doherty.
Here.
Chairman Murphy.
Here.
Let it also be noted, present this morning is Town Manager Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Mazzaro, and myself.
Thank you. We now have had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting. There is one edit I'd like, please, it said there was no expartee communication. I actually spoke to Rob Campbell about Chet Slaver's application for the garage. If we could just make that amendment, and with that, there's no other amendments.
I know they presented with.
I actually have one little typo, page four. Renee on Paragat starts Mary Walton. If you go towards the bottom, it said views, and it just had H E D at the end of it.
Their mother's view shed or view something?
View shed.
That.
What do you want to import?
What it's supposed to say.
View shed. So what you're talking about? I don't have the mention in front of me. Yeah, view shed is a word. It is talking about the views. I looked it up.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. You educated me. We all, we all learned something.
This is a multi-purpose meeting.
It must be that message.
Yeah, I get it.
All right. With those corrections or non-corrections, I move they be presented.
Check.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes. Okay, are we settled? Right. In that case, are there any additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or a change in the arrangement of agenda items in front of us this morning?
There are none.
That's okay. We have the dates coming up for our future meetings. I will not be here on March 28th.
Can I ask if that's going to be an issue for any of you that's the day before Good Friday? So I don't know if any of you are going to be out of town or.
From here.
All right. Okay, so you'll chair the meeting that, that morning, Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Okay.
We now move on to the public hearing part of our meeting this morning. And has there been any expartee communication concerning the applications in front of us this morning?
No.
No. I do have to declare expartee. I had an email from Mrs. Gangar.
Okay.
Concerning the application. And with that, Renee, anyone who'd like to speak this morning? Could they?
Mr. Dan, over here. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you out. If I do not know you, then you know your names before you.
Thank you. And so we now move on to the first application in front of us this morning. Mark.
Good morning, the board. For the record, Mark Marsh, British Marsh and Associates. Today, I'm joined by Chris Simon, who is representing Mary Navarro Landscape Inc. Also with us is Mrs. I didn't know, Missy Walsh, who is the owner of the property with her husband Joe. We're here to basically go through a fairly substantial renovation to an existing house. We're asked for three approvals. One is minor improvements in the North Ocean Boulevard overlay permit district, demolition permit, and a level three approval. Can we roll here? While we're waiting for this, I'll just give you a little background on the property. This house was built in the late, mid to late 90s. It was developed, I think, by a speculative owner. It is a very awkward house, existing house. It's Mediterranean in character. I don't, won't say it's true Mediterranean. It's, I hate to use the word, and I may get in. It's a Boca Mediterranean, which you'll see shortly. Sorry, go back. This is always fun. We got to get a minute. It's located just about five blocks north of, or four properties, five properties north of the B and T. It's 1350 North Ocean Boulevard. The Walshes bought this property a little over two years ago and fell in love with the lot. It's a wonderful lot. It actually, from the road, you drive down or descend onto a kind of a plateau, which then looks out to the ocean. It's really, but they did a wise thing. They moved in for, I think, one and a half seasons to the existing house. And that's what we always recommend to clients when they purchase a house. And the difficulties of the existing plan came clear to them. And we looked at options to renovate, but then decided that we had to do major surgery to this particular property. So what we're showing here, here today is a transformation of this Mediterranean, which has a ton of awkwardness in it. And coming back with something that I think is much more in character with Gulfstream look. The driveway, the need for the North Ocean Boulevard approval is the fact that we're moving the driveway further south. And Chris will go through this to make a little bit more gracious driveway entry. That's the only reason we need the North Ocean Boulevard approval. We're going to change the motor court as a circular approach now, and a circular motor court. We're going to make a more rectilinear motor court. We're going to create a sense of entry through a stone terrace garden area and then approach the house. The pool is going to stay very similar to where it is now in a similar location. And we're going to move the seawall or the retaining wall on the east side further east. The thing to note here is that when this house was built, the coastal control line was the old coastal control line. In 97, when the design moved to this point here. And that comes into play because the house is on piles and it does exceed the minimum FEMA height. So that is one huge value to the property and the house as it stands. We are going to, you'll see a square plan here on the site, and I'll go through that with you and show you what it's transformed from. Next one, please. This is a house, I don't know how many of you might have been to the house or visited the site. But again, it's one of these Boca Mediterranean's that has one of everything on it. It's just, it's, the facade is just littered with ornaments that make no, no real reference to anything significant. So that's what we're challenged with. So next one, please. This is what the existing house plan looks like. And I think I counted a half a dozen perpendicular, 90-degree walls in this whole structure. Everything else is a 45-degree. And why I know it's a spec is because these were developed in Boca on very small lots. And it was an illusion by using the angle to make it feel bigger and grander. But it, it just destroys the use of a lot of spaces awkwardness. And we're intending now to do a major demolition to the structure and bring it much more into the lifestyle of the Walshes than what you'd expect. Continue. This is the second floor, just to show you an example. This is an upper gallery area, maybe 300 or more square feet that really you can't use. There's no way to furnish it. It's just, it's just a really a showhouse, or it was, or hopefully it was. And again, you see the angles and the roof arrangement here. Next, please. So this is a demolition, the demolition, mainly we wanted to move the garage because again, it's a 45-degree angle, which makes it awkward for, you know, getting in and out and just as an arrival for the site element. Very nice. And then you can see, we want to clip everything up and make it rectilinear, which is more normal or common for the style that we're trying to create. Next, please. This is our first floor, our ground floor plan. Now you can see the regularity of the, the rectilinear elements, that the spaces are now much more functional. There was a staircase, I should have shown you, that was right in the center of the house. It, it was a round stair, made no sense. It was actually very difficult to go up, ascend and descend. So we are now re-ranging. So this will be a major renovation and demolition to this, to this existing house. Next. This is the existence upstairs, again, the angular nature of most of it. And there's a well, two-story opening between the ground floor and the second floor. We will be keeping that, but reducing it substantially. But again, you can see the erratic nature of the, the way the plan lays out. Next, please. And this is our version of what we're proposing. And notice that roofs are not more rectangular, more balanced, not all these angles. And this is, the, the floor plan is actually mimicking basically what's there, but just turning it into the lifestyle of the Walshes. The accommodation is very similar. In terms of square footage, we were vested with, I think, 8798 square feet, which we're not adding anymore. In fact, we're doing three feet less, which I've never left on the table, but. But I think that the Walshes are happy with the layout, that it meets all their demands and their program requirements. Next, please. You can see the roof, roof again is much more organized. The important thing here is that the mass of the house is actually going to be reduced by this scheme because the roof is so, so eccentric in the original or the existing plan that if the scale is of the roof is just massive compared to the house itself. Next, please. What we did here was to do the upper images they proposed. We're introducing our Caribbean, Anglo Caribbean look, which we brought to the town many, many years ago. And it's a look that's much more appropriate, not only for Gulfstream, but for the climate and location of where we are. So above is what we're proposing. Below, you can see all these elements that they have no reference. These are no use. I did have an older interior designer work for me, and he came up with the word hazary. And I'm going, what the hell is that? Sorry, at least we're. And the definition is putting a lot of useless elements on the facade of a building. In other words, you're just creating all these elements. The scale of some of these rafters is not consistent. You'll see, we're, we're making everything consistent. The fenestration is again, all over the place. Next one, please. This is just a cut through the, the entry courtyard, showing the actual facade of the main house. That's the lower one. Again, the upper being the one we're proposing. Continue. And then this is the east exposure or east elevation. Again, below, you'll see, again, this is actually when the manual was developed for guidance for the, the town in terms of architectural style. This would have been a great candidate, the existing house. I mean, this is, you know, just expansive, plain glass, plate, plate glass windows, no, no muttons, nothing that resembles anything that I think would conform to the criteria now. And then above is our use of, you know, organized fenestration, removing arches, obviously. Style doesn't allow for that. And just creating, we are creating a lower covered loggia and an upper balcony as one unified element across the north and south wing. Next, please. The side elevations just show, but you can start to appreciate the scale of it. Next. Likewise, here. And the up and down roofs. Next, please. In terms of material, and these are just sex crush sections through the proposed house. The, the heights are actually very, floor-to-floor heights are very generous, which we want to utilize. Next, please. So these are renderings just of what we're proposing. The materials, there will be a Canadian, a Canadian shingle roof, which somebody may be familiar with. There are those roofs in town. They're again, very Caribbean and Bahamian look. They, when they, whether they started the kind of a light brown, and when they weather, they become that silver color that almost looks like a slate. So we propose to use that. The house will be white primarily, and the shutters and any of the other elements will be a light gray. Just to again, make it very peaceful, quiet, and I think more appropriate. With that, I'll answer any architectural questions before I pass it over to Chris, or shall we continue?
Mark, I've got a quick question. On A 4.3, you don't need to go back to it, on the east elevation, just what was the glass ratio?
I know this is. I, it, I didn't even calculate it because it's. Yeah. Ours is, yes. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
No, it's just. It was 90%.
Yeah. We're going in the right direction.
Yeah. No, definitely in the right direction. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mark, just a quick question on the north elevation as compared to the south elevation.
Yes.
The south, you have shutters, and the back you don't.
On, no, on the sides?
On the south elevation, the front, you have shutters, correct?
And then. Can you go back, sorry?
And this is only a question.
Okay.
So again, my statement is, on the south elevation, the front elevation, you have shutters. On the north elevation, you don't. So is that a reason?
No, I just didn't want it. It's, you know, we could add shutters there. That's not a problem. It just, you know, it, it would be more consistent, obviously.
So. Just an observation.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
No, I think that's fine. No more questions?
Yeah, I think it looks.
Do you want to move on to the next? Great.
Yep. Okay. Have Chris come up and go through.
Good morning. For the record, Chris Simon, Navarro Williams Design. Mark kind of touched on the site plan and a little bit of the changes to the site plan, so I won't spend too much time on some of those items. But I will kind of make note that on the property, there's a lot of existing palm trees that we're going to end up removing just because the heights of these trees are just kind of beyond what we want to see in the, in the new gardens. So the majority of the palm trees will be gone, some of the trees that are just not in the best shape. The, all of the sea grapes will remain in place. They have nice full canopies on them, helping, providing a lot of good screening from the, from the road and from the adjacent properties. So a lot of that screening will remain in place and will continue to enhance that as well. Stuff to go on to, I think we can really just spend most of the time on the rendered site plan, if you don't mind. Yes, right here. So as Mark touched on, the driveway gate curb cut entrance from the, from North Ocean will be shifted, proposed to be shifted further south. And we're really trying to ease that curveway into the, into the entry court, whether that be for larger vehicles such as delivery-type vehicles, maintenance trucks for the, for the lawn crews. Just a, just a gentle, gentler approach. It's a little bit tight as it is now. With that, will lead into the new rectilinear entry court for guests' arrival. We're keeping, we're actually shifting one of the, one of the sea grape trees right into this spot here, which is going to be between the, kind of the residence and, and staff parking areas and leading into the garage. And that'll help kind of screen the, the views into the garage door. So it's kind of really softening that, that whole paved area, helping reduce the sense of space that's there. Like I said, also kind of screening or buffering the view right into the garage doors, which are now facing, facing west. We also have, that's, that's within the, the driveway is also within the overlay, North Ocean overlay district. That's the, where the request was, was touched on. From the entry court, you lead through the gate into a more formal, more usable space. In the entry garden, we have the long north-south facing lawn area, followed by the nice formal entry paving right there at that entry courtyard. This is going to allow for a little bit more formality, kind of meeting up, update the site. And it'll also allow for, if they wanted to have cocktails or some sort of light entertainment in the front, it kind of gives them a little bit of an outdoor space without having to push into the, into the lawn. Because we all know sometimes there's a little bit of a breeze back there. So it'll be more of a, kind of a passive entry. We do have a water feature that's going to be on access with that north-south lawn. That'll help kind of add to that tranquility and the, the peaceful arrival. We also, Mark mentioned, we're going to be updating the pool. New pool constructed in about the same location, excuse me. A little bit more formal orientation on the shape centered on access at the, at the east loggia there, facing the ocean. The large lawn space will be expanded upon. We don't, currently, it's, it's a little bit broken up, let's say. So you get a little, much greater sense of, a sense of space, nice peaceful passive lawn on the east side of the house. The retention wall will shift a little bit to the east, allowing for more of that space. This is, this will be a frangible wall breakaway with the gardens extending around, wrapping around to the north side, east of the northeast loggia, just giving nice views into the, out into the ocean. And we do have the south side of the house, there was an existing terrace that was there with a, as Mark stated, and a, a very dated look to it, the materials for the hardscape itself, same. And we just wanted to update that and make it a little bit more formal, giving this little private garden, little secret space that also houses the outdoor showers for the pool, and make their way around to the side there. And the hardscape itself is going to be very clean. We're actually considering a precast or a manufactured stone with shell or an aggregate into this. So it'll be a very nice kind of a beachy sense, work well with the architectural styles that are, where the house is being updated into. And with that, I think we're, we're really kind of, that's really I want to cover. We do have the, the east and the west side of the house, when you do enter, now you'll have this nice big lawn space. So you'll, right when you come through that buffer, you're going to have this nice sense of space right when you get in there. This large expanse on the left and plan, west side of the house, kind of creating a little bit more space throughout the site overall. And with that, if there's any questions?
Would be any comments from the neighbors?
Yeah.
No?
America, I just have one observation. If everyone could turn to the, as the tree will move, P D one. The, the one thing that strikes me, and this is more in the context of what the town has done in the past. Clearcutting a piece of property is discouraged. And I see that basically, you're essentially moving, taking out all the existing trees.
The palm trees.
Yes.
Palm trees, right. So they're, they've kind of outgrown, the canopies are very high at the, at the, where they are currently. What we'd like to do is install lower canopy trees. Because right now, if the, the canopy is up above the house level of the roofline, it's not providing any sense of screening other than the, other than the sense of age, let's say, right? We can certainly reuse and re-incorporate some of those trees into the newer material. So we have a little bit of a mix that we could certainly take out under consideration.
Yeah. Paul, just to clarify, the established vegetation that occurs on the west end is going to be preserved. Right. There's a huge band intrigue here, which we're working around. So from the road, the appearance will be very similar.
Right. Right. Yeah. Not to mess it up, but all, all of the canopy trees, all of the sea grapes that are there, that are providing the buffer and the shade that the canopy that's there, that will all remain.
Again, these are observations.
Sure.
The canopy is important to the town, I think.
That's right.
And varied, varied huts. Some of the older canopies convey the fact this town has been around for a while. It's not a new development. And so I struggle with that.
Sure.
I, I hear what you're trying to accomplish, but I'm also trying to preserve, when you look behind you and that picture of going down Gulfstream.
Right.
I mean, we could clear all that out, put low canopy, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't look like Gulfstream.
Understood, understood.
I'm just, staff, you know, I'm curious as to your perspective on this.
Well, so just to follow up on Mr. Lyons' question, I think I know where he's going. I mean, we do have the tree disposition chart here. And it doesn't show anything that's been new planting.
That, this, this is, this is a existing demolition plan. The new material would show up on your LP sheets. And you should have a plant list as well, which will include all of your new material on LP3. So LP1 through LP3 is all of your proposed materials.
Okay.
We do have everything, when we typically do projects, we, like Mr. Lyons, agree with the established look and appearance. If there's anything of value on a property, we always maintain it. We always secure it on the property. We repurpose it, we build around it, design around it. Palm trees are, they can take a beat. Palm trees are, they can take a beating and end up not looking that great. Their health, they have sometimes they struggle with health issues. Trees are much easier to withstand different types of pests and problems and winds. They're very resilient. So they will maintain these nice full canopies, which is what we want our project. When we install new materials, we always specify substantial sized materials so that the project has an appearance that it has been established for a few years. Rather than coming in with, if it's if it's something where we have to be budget conscious, certainly we'll we will look into and consider smaller trees. This is not that type of a project. Everything that would go in would be very substantial going in.
And I appreciate all those. I have a very small piece of property, coconut trees, I have royal palms. I have two right next, next to my house. I'm not sure that's the smartest thing, but they were there. I'm not planning to take them out.
Sure.
So maybe that now the discussion, looking at this list of trees you're going to remove, I think there's only three royal palms.
Right.
Having put in coconut palms myself that grow really quickly. So I'm not, you take those out, they'll be tall before you know it. The royal palms, they, you know, they get to, my coconut trees weren't that high when I put them in. And now they're fighting with the royal palms. So I'm really more focused on those three royal palms. Can you save any of those?
We can certainly look at that and find a good home for those within the new landscape.
Man, is that reasonable, unreasonable? I mean, I'm only one voice here.
Paul, I think as I said earlier, the streetscape is not going to be affected by this project, the existing streetscape. So it's, it's, it's actually a moot issue. Because everything is going to be the seaweed, two thirds of the property where we have, but the established landscaping that's currently there is going to be preserved. The Walsh has wanted, town wants it, everybody, because we don't, I agree 100%. We don't want to change the impact of the streetscape that we have now. So I think what we're talking about and what Chris is talking about is really material more located on the center and east, where we have to do, you know, the renovation.
Such large, deep lots, and obviously two thirds of it is sort of to the east is what I'm hearing. But I like Paul's comment in general. Noticing that the problems, there are three, you know, why couldn't you save and take them? So in general, I think I would just kind of support your.
I just want to be sure we have a good discussion of the subject before we just take them out.
Oh, yeah, no, that's really my purpose.
Correct. This is, I'll just, I'll finish it up with this question.
You don't even know what a tree is.
And comment. So on LP two, that chart there, that represents your new plantings.
On LP three, we have a three list of materials deployed.
We didn't get, we didn't get LP three. We had two twos.
Yeah, we have LP two that has a chart. It looks like.
It should be this sheet that's up in the screen.
Okay.
Yes, those are the specifications for the planting, the plans, LP one, LP two, show the locations of where.
So I think, I think normally when we see a tree disposition list, yours is so large, you had to put it on a couple of different pages. But normally we see them compared, comparing the ones that are being removed and then added. So I like that was okay, maybe the confusion that we didn't really look far enough to see your plant, new plantings.
Absolutely, understandable.
And my second question was, are any of those coconut palms, did you, might, were they, could they be considered diseased?
Well, I'm sure there's a few on the property that are not in the best health. I don't know whether they've been on a program for basically steroids for lethal yellowing. So I'd, we'd have to really kind of dive into that a little bit more, but anything that would be being treated for that, there's a reason. So it'd be better to obviously take those out, right?
Okay.
Mark, there's currently not a wall on A1A, is there? So part of this plan is a new wall and new gate?
Yes.
Can you go back to that? You had that up there a minute ago.
Right, there was an elevation we have on.
Yeah, so you're going to have six, six foot tall posts, I guess.
It appears.
Here. Yeah. Wall is going to be new also. Is there going to be anything planted in front of the wall? Or are we going to just be looking at a white wall? Okay.
So you have the material, right. You have material planted on the exterior.
Does that reflect it?
Well, yeah, that is a reflect.
Exactly. And the sea grape trees that you can sense here, with the secret trees in this rendering.
Yeah.
That represents the existing trees that are there. So this is really the view from the road as it is today. Regarding the trees.
Yeah.
As you would see post, post project.
The wall, wall will be new. And is there low planting in front of the wall? Are you going to try to mask the wall? No, you're going to leave some of the walls.
I think so. Go ahead.
No, we were proposing low planting in front of the wall. If there's any comments that, on the contrary, we can certainly look at.
I'm going to break that up a little as well, my comment.
Yeah, it does look a little just too dark.
We can absolutely enhance that.
Do you have a picture of what it looks like now?
Uh, do you have any, only existing photos of your seven? There was nothing.
I think it's, it's basically all green now, just green.
Yeah, it's, we can see this illustrate.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, yes, it's all green.
Yeah.
So.
That actually replicates what's there now. You can see from the area.
Yeah.
It's really quite dense.
That's what I was just gonna say. It is dense, so you can't really see into the property now. But to your point, it will be going from that, let's say, natural state, appearance of natural state into this, let's call it, I don't want to use the word barrier, but a bear. Which we now, certainly consider screening it a little bit more.
All right, just some variation to it.
Yeah.
It's just monolithic at the moment. It's, yeah.
That's a good point.
Okay. Certainly.
Malcolm, how do we get to handle it? We just rely on?
Well, put it this way, this is going to a level three. So I think we'll make a recommendation that points on the landscaping is taken into account if we vote on this to go forward.
Okay.
I think that's the best way.
Oh, yeah, that's like.
Yeah, okay. If there are no more questions or comments from public on this proposal, could I ask for some motions, please, concerning this application?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval of a North Ocean Boulevard overlay permit to allow a new gate and relocate the driveway to the south, better aligned motor port approach.
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dougherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a demolition permit to permit a partial demolition of the existing residence.
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dougherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a level three architectural site plan based on the finding that a partial demolition of the existing residence and new renovations within the footprint of a non-conformal residence, moving the existing driveway south and a new gate and fencing meet the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
And do we want to add to that, our points about the, on that motion about the increased landscaping on the external?
Landscaping on the outside.
Improvements to the west facing to the west side of the wall.
And landscaping.
Yeah, we revisit the wall design.
Yes.
Board's comments.
I'll second that with the addition.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dougherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so we move on to our second application in front of us this morning. Good morning, Carlos.
Good morning.
May I ask what this is?
Oh, that's my recorder.
He has a lovely accent.
I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know.
Good morning. Name is Carlos Binatius with Randall South Architects. We are here to propose a, in addition to an existing detached garage structure at the address 2817 North Ocean Boulevard. The first photograph is illustrating the existing detached garage structure. This structure was built, and I believe, 2011. So this is the, the newer structure that has been built in this property. This is an aerial photo of the whole property. It consists of a couple of different structures, the main home and a couple of detached structures, including the garage that we are going to be attaching our addition to. This is the site plan reflecting the same, illustrating where we're proposing to do the addition of the what is going to be utilized as a theater for the, for our client. This shows the floor plan. It's a, it's a small addition, having compared to the rest of the home, obviously. The, the addition that we're proposing is 786 square feet. This is basically what we're allowed to build maximum, you know, so we're not proposing, we're not asking for any special exceptions. So we're basically going now to the limit that we're, that we will be allowed to to build. This is the, the proposed addition. The top south elevation to the left is the existing garage and to the right with the color roof is what we're proposing for the addition. We're maintaining the same essence of the architecture, the existing architecture. I'll show you some additional photos later on, on how we're tying it into the rest of the structures and to the main house. Utilizing the same roof tile, the same stucco color that it has been painted throughout the house and also the windows and doors are going to be similar to the rest of the, the structures throughout the property. Keeping, keeping the, the high limitation to what is allowed by the town of Gulfstream. Again, it's a single story structure theater. Obviously, you know, it doesn't really need windows, but for the architectural style, we need to maintain windows. Obviously, he's going to have some window treatments. This is a couple of additional photos of the existing structure that is there from a couple of different angles. There, there are some additional angles of, you know, just to, just to illustrate all the details, the type of tile, stucco, windows and so forth, just to show you how it's tying in. This is, this is a photo of the main house and a structure that is to the north of that. Again, it's just to more, just to illustrate how we're trying to maintain the same architectural style for the addition, you know, so it just looks like it's been there forever. And again, this is the same, same image. That pretty much completes my presentation. Any questions?
I must say, it's, it's a very unique property in Gulfstream. You know, it's extremely unique in front of the, it's beautiful.
It is.
It's one of the oldest.
It is, absolutely.
One of the third of what Bob would know that. How old is the old spare residence? Yeah.
And I remember when this came before us last time in terms of the theater and the solution is far more prevalent.
Yes, yes. Well, I did not mention that we were here to try to get the theater onto a non-conforming structure. Obviously, there were some things in the code that that would allow us to, to do that. But there was a lot of feed, negative feedback from that. So, you know, obviously we retract it and and the homeowner wanted to do something that was by right. So this is what we're trying to do. He still wanted to have his structure added.
Will you be able to match the tile pretty closely with existing garage?
Yeah, so if, if anything, I mean, we could always do mockups prior to that tile going up. Obviously, this structure is not that old. This is 2011. So I'm pretty sure that we're going to be able to find something very comparable.
And the, the proposal is centrally located, but we have to ask, is there any feedback from?
We had someone call, wanted to know when the agenda was going to be posted. I told them, I have not heard back.
Okay. The, the roof on the main part of the, this house, I know there's a couple of structures on this property. Was that done in 2011? I'm just.
I don't, I don't have a record of that. But it does look very similar.
Okay. I just don't, matching these tiles is getting more and more difficult.
It is.
And you have to maybe even import them from down on the, you know, they're being made.
California or something, correct.
I've had somebody that's trying to, struggling with it. We don't want to put up, you know, obviously the.
And typically that is what we always do, not, not just for the town, but for the homeowner. Obviously, the homeowner needs to see it and approve it. So we have to do mockups in order to try to get the, the right blend to try to match it as close to as possible. We don't want it to look like two separate structures at all.
Any more questions from the board? In that case, could I ask for motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a level two architectural site plan based on a finding that the construction of a new single story 786 square foot addition to an existing freestanding garage meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards. Second.
Now, I could ask a question. Should we have the title reviewed by staff or just, is that unnecessary?
Why not? It's something at home. I mean, as you say, the owner isn't going to want to see.
Ignore it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay on that, Paul.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dougherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. Thank you, Carlos. And so we move on to our next application in front of us this morning. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Robbie Glenn with Delray Garden Center. I come before you today for the Casiapo residence and trying to install artificial turf in the backyard. He owns two residences. This is the one on the corner that is you know, screened in and blocked in by fishtail, large fishtail palms all across the back. The reason why we're trying to put the artificial turf in is because it's on the north side of these big fishtail palms. It's very wet, doesn't get a lot of sun. The grass isn't doing well, and this would be a perfect application for it. And basically, this is the sample. I provided you guys with the layout and everything. And I'd open up to you if you have any questions. Seems pretty straightforward. I've gone over it with the town and everything. So this is why I'm before you today. Sure.
I mean, is it, there's very specific.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is made of, how long? Yeah, but we don't need, but, but the town needs to see that spec sheet to make sure it conforms.
So we, we just have a motion, if you wanted to approve the application, contingent on staff confirming the spec sheet meets all the requirements of the code, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, try in the future, I think, why don't the town look at before it gets presented to us?
Absolutely. That was also an issue with Mark Marsh's project where we had this landscaping plan that was provided, you know, very late. It was not noticed as a land clearing permit, but it should have been. The original conversation was we're doing remodeling and then we find out that there's a lot of adjustment to the landscaping. So, you know, absolutely, a lot of that needs, we try to process applications quickly as they come in and you know, sometimes we, you know, we lean on the applicant to get us materials, but absolutely, I agree. In some cases, we just need to say no. Okay.
It was very abnormal for Mark.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I kind of sense that.
Yeah.
Robbie, I think that particular piece of property I'm familiar with, and it's totally shaded. I don't know how you can grow any grass. It can't be seen by anybody.
The street or the water.
And we have, and there's clear criteria we have to meet and checks and boxes for those.
I understand, yeah.
The mayor did ask us to do a drive by, so we did. The mayor did ask us to do a drive-by, so we did do that.
Right, you can't see it.
You can't see it. There's no way to cut back the shade on the south side. It's just overwhelming.
The fishtail palms are so large and I, I don't, we don't really like to cut those.
Yeah, the neighbor doesn't want to.
It's the same.
So, are there any more questions?
So it's the high, the yellow highlight here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a level two architectural site plan based on a finding that the conversion of 1,100 square feet of natural sod to artificial turf meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards with the following two conditions. Landscaping shall be maintained so as to prevent the artificial turf from being visible from the street or waterway, and that the product chosen meets all the technical standards that the town has come up with.
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. Thank you, Robbie. Thank you. So can we move on to our final application in front of us this morning?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, for the record, Geroliopoulos GE Architecture. Our address is 1045 East Atlantic Avenue. With me today is Christian Vendoza, who's doing our presentation. We also do have our client here. Should you have any questions for her? She hasn't sworn in. And we'd be happy to answer anything to help us along here. So we were here last month. You're, you did approve and sort of the commission, the middle villa that we are proposing to renovate. We actually were reducing the square footage a little bit. And what we were trying to do was move some of that square footage over to what we call the main villa. The next slide, I think we tried doing last time, which is a flyover. Again, this project, property is very unique because of, it's actually abutting the property to the south. So, you know, you basically have 1465 and 1443 touching each other. There's different scenarios of when this was subdivided. It seems like it was in the 30s. There are going to be some comments that I'm going to make with regards to historic. But I, I imagine when Trey is back, he might shut me off to a certain point. I want to make it clear, you guys do not have any historic guidelines. I don't believe you have any structures that are even on the local or national register. But I know the neighbor Bob did mention it, and I respect that about the historic significance of the building. My point being that it doesn't really apply to this, but I do have some stuff in the presentation to help you guys see what the Secretary of Interiors of the state calls for when you're doing the addition. So there you're seeing our site. We're all on the north side in red. Unique in the sense that the site is only 68 feet wide. Your code requires 150. So obviously, there's a lot tighter. Both structures are crossing over the property line, so they are both non-conforming. On the next slide, here's, here's the shot that you're seeing from the ocean side. So two of the things that you do look at when you're considering historic structures is what do you see from the public right of way? I'm treating this as the beach would be a public, if you will, view. The next part you do when you're doing addition, it should be subordinate to the main structures, which means it should never be standing out more than anything else. And I think when you look at it, you actually should treat this almost as one, because it is one building that was subdivided. For that matter, you would say, okay, how is this proposed elevator that we are proposing going to be impacting this property? On the next slide, one of the things that you had directed us to is to look at alternate solutions. And we, we wanted to do that. So, and we are presenting that today. We were trying to come up with different solutions. I do believe our clients did meet with Bob like a week ago, just talking about different things and gave him a chance to see even the inside of the home. The next slide. So we're going to go through the house, and there are basically like three areas where this elevator would be appropriate, should we go to the inside. I do want you to look at, this is their living room. It's up front. This would actually come out of this roof and go to the exterior. It would have to tie back into the primary closets. I think I'd be ashamed to disrupt that room because actually the way it's situated to have a square in it, an elevator. The next slide. This is their dining room. I mean, when you look at the detailing, I think Bob mentioned it. We just saw Mark Marsh was here before. He worked on this. They did a great job in the inside. I mean, when you're looking at ceilings like that, this is their dining room. Again, if we were to do the elevator here, then it would actually go up into the primary bathroom. Next slide. This is probably the more logical one that I think the board was looking at. This is part of that three-story tower. Okay, so this is what we call the stair foyer. Again, they did a great job on the interiors, the ceilings and the treatments. But the problem is, on the next slide, you're going to go up into his primary bathroom. So it really is not as practical as you would think to just add it to the inside. On the next slide. All right, so you have your three villas. This was the one that we actually presented last month. Here's where we are here, square footages and lock coverages all remaining relatively the same. But it does bring us back to looking at, where do we do it on the outside? So we are considering putting it back when we showed you last time, but we are saying we only going to go two stories. We even changed a little bit of the design. Next slide. So again, you saw the picture right here. That was of the stair foyer area. That was the dining room. That was the living room. We're putting it right in here. Next slide. One of the things that we're doing in this design, this is the proposed design, we're actually taking what we feel is the historic door that was on that elevation. We're putting it access to the elevator. So from the outside, you can access into the elevator. Shut that door. You can go up without actually having to go around into the interior. Next slide. One of the things in this portion here is, you know, again, thinking about if I had to go internally, you're basically in this area here. It would affect that bathroom, but in reality, also would be prohibiting our clients to use their home during construction. We believe doing on the outside, they can actually stay in this home. What's unique about the home, and as much as the property is big, this house right here only has one bedroom. Okay, it's the second floor. It's the primary. Downstairs is all their living spaces. Top floor is really just a loft. So, you know, it's really impacting the area where is their bedroom. Next slide, please. This is just basically the lower roof that you're going to see. You're going to see in the elevation, we propose a little shed roof, which is in keeping with the architecture style. That's going to be over the door that enters into the elevator. Next slide, please. Okay, so I am only bringing this up because this is what you would be looking at if it was historic. Okay, and this is what they call the Secretary of Interior Standards. And I think that the main thing I really want to talk about, just read the whole thing into the record, but it's the second part of this. A new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing, size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property. The next part, though, is where we feel we are meeting it totally. The new additions and adjacent or related new construction shall be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and the environment would remain unimpaired. And that's the important part, because the elevator can be designed with actual control joints and expansion joints that we can remove it. Should they sell this and somebody say, I don't like it, you can go right back to what we have. And that's the key to this. Again, it's not part of your code, but I wanted to bring it up. The next part is a little bit more about additions. I've highlighted some of the things. But it's really the third, well, the first part basically says historic preservation recognizes the evolution of a property and subsequent owners of the historic resources are part of that evolution process. During the course of time, frequently additions have been made to historic properties because of practical needs and change of economic status. The third bullet down repeats it again when it talks about where you put it. When possible, design and construct the addition so that basic form and character of the historic building will remain intact and if the addition was ever removed. So we feel, again, this is the proper solution. Next. One of the things you do when you are dealing with historic structures, you want to make sure, again, the public right of way. I talked about from the beach, you'd never see this. This is from A1A. Probably at this elevation, Tom is the only one that might see it because it's at 10 feet. We did a shot. You're still not seeing the building in the back. Remember, the building in the back is three stories. You don't see it. Let's go to the next slide. Now we're at 20 feet. You still don't see it. So the point being that our proposed being a two-story, you will never see it. Next slide. So this is your existing elevation. This is the door we were talking about that we will be relocating and putting it into the proposed elevator. Next. Again, it's heavily vegetated. You're not going to be seeing it from anywhere. Next.
I'm sorry, what, is that the north elevator?
No, go back, Christian. I'm sorry. So this is where the.
Oh, that?
No, go back, I mean forward.
Forward. Sorry.
No, there you go. So this is the existing tower. The proposed elevator would be right.
Okay, it's the final.
Right in front of it, two-story.
Yes.
20 feet, what's the height?
Yeah, it's going to be give or take because that one there is approximately at 21 feet.
Okay.
Next. This is what we had proposed last month.
Yeah.
And, and felt that, I believe, the chairman was very upset with that. So we said, we're going to change it. So we changed it. Next. One of the things is, this is the proposed in blue. Eight foot five is off the property line. It's kind of, you know, you try to do comparables and you say setbacks and stuff. Now, we know we're asking for a special exception. This particular lot, I, I just chose to look up in Delray Beach. It would be R1 zoning and the setback would be seven foot six. So we're actually exceeding that would be, you know, but in our case, we are 15 feet. We already know we're non-conforming because we touched the property line. But there you're seeing what we're proposing. The door gets relocated. We have a shed roof over it. We're proposing a window above it. Next, please. Again, I'm kind of looking at this being all one structure. How would you look at it historically? You would want to make sure that whatever we're proposing is subordinate to not only this tower, but to the main structure. Next, please. That's where it would be. It's going to still be heavily vegetated. You won't see it. It is actually a small element of the overall structure, not overtaking anything architecturally. Next.
Gary, can you just stay on that one, please?
Oh, go back.
When you say you can't see it, can you just make sure? Because that's one of the concerns that.
Yeah, because it's going to be tucked in, and basically you have all this vegetation on both sides of the wall. So you won't be seeing it because it's going to be so tight to the hogs.
Okay, it's just on.
We just wanted to get a little graphic of where it's going to visually understand. Next. And this is the, the similar one, and you'll see enassing. Next. How is well below the existing tower and tucked in. Next, please. So that is our proposed elevation. We go around it. I think we got the other views that you would see. Next.
Can we go back one?
Yep.
Is that an artificial window that will align the fourth window over from left to right?
Right, we're going to clean it. It will be a real window.
A real window, okay.
And in this case, we have two options, Tom, on that. You can leave the glass and it just is always going to let light into the elevator tower. The elevator would be solar inside, so it's not like you can see out of it.
Right.
The other option is we actually take drywall. We paint it black and the window is false.
I think it looks better with the window. And you preserve in the upstairs window in the office. That's staying right where it is.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That one did shift. This one did have to shift because of these elements right here. That one shifted over a foot. And we centered it on the existing one that's right below it.
Because in the previous application, it was just blank.
Yes, it was. It was just shuttered.
Yeah, it was just shutters.
You got it. Next, please.
You said one, you said one foot.
Oh, yeah, the window. Yeah, yes, we were centering it. We had to shift it one foot so it'd line up with that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, please. So this would be your south elevation. Next. That being the north. And finally, I believe we, and our final one comes to the code. So, you know, reading it a little bit into the record as far as obviously 7075C, Town Code Section Addition Structures with Existing Non-Conforming Setbacks. Yeah, I think the main parts is when you go to C subsection B, Specific Standards for Review, Conforming Locations for the Addition Are Impractical. So obviously, if we were doing something that was going to conform, it, it, we got to prove that it's impractical. We think we have done that. Significantly More Expensive, Have a Significantly More Expensive Or Having a Significant Adverse Impact on the Site Plan In Terms of the Overall Site Design Or Relationship Between the Site Plan Elements Including But Not Limited to Structures, Patios, Driveaways, and Landscape. B, The Location of the Addition Shall Represent a Logical Extension Of the Existing Floor Plan In Terms of Function and Design. And then C, The Exterior Design of the Addition Shall Represent a Logical Extension Of the Existing Structure And Shall Be Consistent With All Applicable Design Standards in This Chart. That concludes our presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions should you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Questions from the board?
I, I think it was a very thoughtful analysis and presentation.
Yeah, compared to the previous situation.
I think it's much improved.
Agreed.
I think it touched in there nicely. Really do.
It almost looks like it could have been there before.
Yeah. The, the old door is a nice touch. Yeah. Yeah.
What, what do you think, Bob? Because.
Yeah, it's your, it's your the neighbor. No rubbish. That will never, that will never.
Obviously, this is a huge improvement. And it shows the value of this board. I know, I know you voted six zip against it. And, and that was the right decision. Obviously, it's very painful for me to realize that we have, you know, we're getting to the point where, where there's almost no old homes left in Gulfstream, and there weren't many to begin with. If you remember, there were only five homes all the ocean when, when this home was built. And then one was torn down. So it's the fourth oldest house in Gulfstream. And if we don't, as a community, try to maintain who we were, then, you know, we, we, we lose something that's very precious, I think. The good news is that the folks that are moving in to this home are, it couldn't be nicer. There is a reason that they want to do what they want to do. And it would be a shame if we couldn't help them figure out how to do it as best as possible. Homes change over time. Gary didn't talk about it, but when the home was designed by Evanderbilt back in the, in 1930, she ran out of money. In 1930, just about everybody ran out of money. We were in the worst depression country has ever had. And she didn't put, finish her design for the, for the, for the building. And when it was divided, part of the design could not be executed. But I, I did my very best to put it back in. So it is as close to what she designed as, as physically possible. And this, this addition is about as close to the original design as physically possible. And the fact that it can be removed, I think, could be a benefit. If the home is eventually sold as one, as opposed to two homes now, you would really like to give the new owner the opportunity to bring it back to the, as close to the way it was when it was originally designed and built. So I, 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 I hope all of you get to know the new owners because I think they're terrific. And I also think that this process that we have here, with you all sitting and, and trying to be as helpful as you can to the, to the new owners is, is really constructive. I, I think it's the high point for, for Gulfstream. And, and I applaud you for what you do. And I wish I were young enough to be able to do it, too. It's, 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 it's fun as well as, as helpful to the, to the community. So with that, I'm, I'm obviously for the change.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I think that, if there are no more questions from the board or the public, could I ask for a motion, please?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a special exception to permit the construction of an elevator within the side setback of a non-conforming single-family residence per section 70 dash 75C.
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty.
Yes.
Chairman Murk.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a level three architectural site plan based on a finding that the addition of an elevator to the existing three-story main residence meets the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
And I'll second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty.
Yes.
Chairman Murk.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you now move on? To items by staff.
Thank you, Chairman. So the discussion surrounding the formation of an ad hoc committee to address massing seems to be the direction that at least some on the commission and perhaps the ARPB would like to go. I did re-listen to last month's ARPB meeting. I think that a lot of what we've been doing over the past years were covered by myself, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Boardman as well, other members of the ARPB. So I want to maybe push us in that direction and start with the formation of a committee with some members of the ARPB and perhaps some volunteers from the community that you think would be willing to serve and add value to the massing discussion. You know, we've, we've had some really great examples recently of some of the massing issues, how they were addressed at thirty-four hundred Polo last month. Although that is a larger lot. And also, we saw one of the older homes in Gulfstream a few applications ago. Thirteen, I'm sorry. Twenty-eight seventeen North Ocean. To me, that really adds color to the fact that large lots benefit from the sliding scale FAR and our zoning districts with small lots are really where we need to focus our attention. That really largely eliminates Ocean West and the beachfront, but I don't want to get to ahead of my, too far ahead of myself. Because we're really looking at forming a committee and maybe having those discussions on the committee level. Mr. Lyons has been mentioned as a potential chair for the ad hoc committee. So I don't know if he has any thoughts on whether the formation of such a committee to address mass and concerns is the direction we want to go and whether he'd be open to chairing such a committee as well as some others on the ARPB. What I had mentioned last month was we would have this sort of massing update on the agenda for the coming months. And one of the things that I had suggested, which I, I thought would be probably be very beneficial, is having a regular update from that committee to the ARPB. So with the commission's recommendation, the ARPB addresses, the ARPB would still largely be in control with how those discussions are shaping without necessarily having every member on the ARPB on the committee. So with that, I'll send it to and discussion and as far as what direction the ARPB thinks we should go.
Thank you, Trey. To remind all of us, the town commission has been raising this as a major concern for a couple of years. Certainly, Tom Smith is familiar with that. And it's time to act. The inventory of older homes, frankly, with the older residents tells us that there's going to be a lot of turnover in the next ten years. And so what do we want? The core district. And in particular, I think the mayor is focused on two streets, but it doesn't mean it's confined to two streets, but Polo and Gulfstream, particularly on the interior streets where they're populated by one-story houses. And, you know, we don't want canyons is a concern. So that's really, and it obviously what's compounding this problem is the fact, for example, on the house on Polo street is at five feet and the house is going to be eight feet. So a differential of three feet. And this is not peculiar to Florida. It means Southampton has developed some new codes to deal with these kind of issues. So other villages and towns are dealing with it. As, as relates to the composition, I think it would be a great idea to get some of the newer residents who are younger, get their perspective. And I would propose to people, I think Curtis may know some of them. One is Gary Cantor. He has a house on Palm Way around two thousand and one, something like that. He tore down a one-story house. It's on the Cove and built a one-story house. And he originally thought about building a two-story house and included that he could really accomplish most of what he wanted on the one story. The other person is, and I've spoken to Gary briefly, and he would be interested in doing it. I also spoke, I've been trying to reach Michael Glennon. I think many of you know, he's shown a real interest in the town. He's shown an interest in being involved in the town. So I think that would be another perspective that would be very helpful. And I mean, these are my suggestions. If there are any other thoughts about people who would be helpful to this analysis and ultimately recommendation. I'm just one person here, so.
What do you see in the way of specialist subject matter experts, Paul, in terms of architects or, you know, town planners or things like that? That, because to me, the, the composition sort of falls into the categories of stakeholders, like you've mentioned, the people who've lived here, but also subject matter experts, they may, because.
You're asking the critical question.
Agreed.
This is something we've been discussing at the commission level. We were hopefully, we were gonna get a gentleman who's a consultant had been in Palm Beach. And Greg knows him well. Unfortunately, he's very busy. But I haven't given up on pushing Greg. We couldn't get him for one or two sessions. It wouldn't be, you know, hours and hours. And we're asking Marty Meyer, Meyer, Brian Coulter had his condition. So any other resources? What we need is people who have have looked at these issues and thought about the issues. There's no magic wand on this. At least get some, okay, this is what we thought about. You know, Gary Cantor said, well, you know, maybe we create incentives for lower profile houses. And he didn't go on and on with all kinds of different options. I mean, I won't get into it at the moment, but yes, any thoughts about bringing in core competency experts? You know, we have views, but when, I mean, I'm not an expert.
Oh, but aren't we going to, I mean, the, the major issue on massing is that younger families, this is a a community of basically formerly retired people who were, who maybe occasionally would have their families come and visit for a weekend or a few days. Whereas now we're getting into a situation where younger families are moving in with their children. And so they're gonna, they are going to at least feel that they need more space because of the additional people. And, and that's going to be ongoing. So we're always going to be fighting this massing problem. And we can't, and you know, you need a certain amount of property to be able to house four people versus two or five people versus two.
Well, you know, I, I hear you, Curtis. And again, there's not a magic wand. We're trying to find some balance.
Yeah.
But we can't ignore it.
All right, I agree.
Have you any idea, Paul, what sort of timeframe? And I know it's how long's a piece of string, but is this a three-month project, a six-month, a year, eighteen months? Anything in your mind?
Well, yeah, my feeling is, I would hope that in six sessions, every other week, we could get pretty much to a, a recommendation. It may not need to be six. I'd like to get it done before we all take off. So, you know, try to get it done March, April, May. And, you know, hopefully we can, no more than one hour. So it's six hours commitment. And it's all about lining it up, scheduling it right. So we get the extra, we need to get the experts sooner than later.
Yeah.
What I'm gonna do, I've identified six or seven sections of the code that impact, in my opinion, amassing. So at least we'll have, and I'm gonna, for any new participants, Renee is gonna, we're gonna need the code for those individuals. And their assignment was, is gonna be to review these sections. And I'll take a little time with them to take them through the code. But then they, because otherwise, you know, we're gonna be wasting time. So preparation, preparation, preparation.
And the other part is from the subject matter experts or expertise is the, there is a legal component to this or potential legal consequences of what we're proposing.
What do you mean, like conflict? Like, I mean, everybody likes, it seems like they like Mark Marsh's opinion, and I do especially. Would, would somebody, could he help guide us? And is, or is he gonna say, gee, if I do, then I'm gonna feel I have a conflict when I do present? But it's an ad hoc committee. It's not the ARPB.
Oh, absolutely. I think any suggestions and resources, I mean, I think Mark.
I mean, he's very busy and everything, but he, he feels it as much to protect his town, I think, is.
But also, if he, if these recommendations do move forward, he's then, he's got a real handle on.
Yeah, he's fine.
Right, yeah. No, no, I think it's wonderful. Maybe even a landscape architect.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, whatever resources we think can help us think through a balanced solution that's workable.
Right. Well, I just, for one, I think it won't work unless you have a professional.
Yeah.
Guiding experience. And I wouldn't even attempt this because we've all talked about this for several years and we just kind of fumble around and really don't kind of.
Going to some of the old commission meetings you'll hear me talking about. When are we getting the expert? When are we?
Right, right.
No, I. So, because you don't want to listen to me. No, really. I mean, I'm not.
Well, they addressed this in Palm Beach, didn't they, Greg? And have struggled with how to.
They continue to struggle.
Yeah, it's a tough one. You may have, we got down a hundred-foot lot, fifteen-foot side setbacks. Here's only seventy feet to build a home. You're almost forcing him up.
Yeah.
You know, and so one of the things we have to think about is that.
Exactly.
Don't want to let him go further out on each side and further back and they build a nice one-story home next to you on the south side.
Oh, I mean, I've been in the house two or three times.
Four, five thousand.
It's a big home.
It's a big house. Yes, yes.
But it's all one story.
Yes.
Where is Gary Cantor's house?
The one store. Okay, so you can go right.
On Palm Way.
Palm Way. And the house we looked at with the, the artificial grass.
Yeah, right.
It's the next house to the west.
Oh, okay.
And it's a very handsome house.
Yeah. Okay, I know exactly. Does he own the lot that's vacant? Somebody owns a lot that's vacant.
That's Steve Ty.
Okay.
So Steve is across.
Across the street, okay.
Well, across the water.
Yeah, right, right, right. Sorry.
And would you envisage the experts here being involved in terms of Greg and Trey?
Of course.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying because they have a.
And, you know, and I mean, listen, we, we can find one. If others want, anyone wants to participate.
Well, I'd like to. I'd like to be on it.
Yeah, I'd like to be on that, too. I mean, just now, I mean, Steve Ty, for instance, is talking about building a house.
Yeah, I'd like to be on.
Greg, do you want to mention the third party?
Can I just mention the expert in what we've been doing in that regard? So simultaneously to the formation of this subcommittee, the staff is reaching out to planning consultants to determine their strengths and availability to participate with the town in our pursuit to address this massing issue. He's not here today, but a shout out to Mr. Coulter for providing a recommendation to reach out to a firm in Coral Gables called Dover Cole and Partners. We spoke to Mr. Dover this week. I think it was this week. And what had what I would call a fruitful discussion regarding the town's mission. Their expertise is in creating comprehensive plans, special area plans, zoning codes, design standards, and street designs. They're located in Coral Gables, so he did, but he did provide other potential resources that are closer to, to us than Coral Gables. And two of those people that he mentioned are associated with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Commission. One being the director now, the other one, a former director who now has her own firm. So these are some people that we, I want to follow up by reaching out to them again to see their availability, their expertise. I mean, the gentleman from, I mean Dover Cole and Partners has clients all over the United States. And but he seemed, he, he seemed intrigued and excited about the mission that we have. He, in fact, and I think Trey said this to you guys, and when he talked to you on the phone, he in fact said, there was some way that that Gulfstream, you know, partnering up with someone, you know, an expert or other towns and cities, if we were able to create some kind of a, a plan to address this, he said it would be a model for towns and cities all up and down the peninsula of Florida. So it's not only Gulfstream that has this problem and, as I'm finding out. So he was excited about it. He did offer their services. What he did say to me was that typically when he takes on a, a mission or a job, he usually makes three appearances. He gets a homework assignment, goes home, works on it, comes back, and it's usually around three appearances before committee or board or whatever. But I think he's flexible. I'm not sure he was ready to take it on yet because he did give me some, some other resources that are closer in case this might take longer. So.
So Greg, I think we'd like to start at the middle of March. Now, we can't get the resources that we need. We have to delay it, but there's no point having it without enough resources.
Yeah.
So just have that.
Sure, that would be in, in my discussion with these people as we reach out. Actually, I don't know how we can work this out. There, there was a former town manager in Gulfstream when I believe I was in Manalapan. Do you remember, wasn't it Harrington?
Harrington.
Scott Harrington. Actually, Scott is a planner by, by profession. And so he was a manager here. I don't know how long he was, but he's now in Michigan and, and has his own farm.
Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin, I'm sorry. Same, same place, basically.
Not in Florida.
Just wanted it to be correct for the record.
He, his, his firm is located where it's cold. So I, I think and I are gonna reach out to him. He may have some other resources that he can tell us about down here that are closer than, than.
By the way, I would urge others, Curtis, for example, where you live, they've probably gone through similar kind of issues with the issue of raising first floor, whether you face it, certainly in the, in the village of Southampton, houses on the beach. There's some old, old houses and they were raised seven and eight feet. I mean, that's a side, and also Southampton has a composition that's so, it's similar in some ways to Gulfstream where it has the ocean district. And then they have the interior, the village. That's where I live. And they've changed their codes, including changing their FAR. And they didn't increase it.
Yeah.
They, so I'm gonna get the information from the village of Southampton. It's a reference point of how they've dealt with it. Because it's a comparable. And, you know, that if there's any other places where they've already addressed it. where they've already addressed it, see what they did, so.
And with respect to Paul in the town of Palm Beach, I have reached out to him. It didn't sound too excited about it. He's actually retired, but he still works for him forty, at least forty hours a week. So he's now a private consultant.
I said to Trey, if he wants to play golf, we'll take him golf.
You know who is, who is really very much up on this is Senator Whitehouse because Rhode Island is going through this. And Senator Whitehouse has gave a presentation up in Rhode Island that I went to about, you know, the coastline evaporating. And a lot of it is going to happen in Rhode Island. And, and, you know, there, he had, they, the state of Rhode Island has incredible resources that are online as to.
That's your assignment.
No, it's not my assignment. I'm delegating that to you. I have far too many.
Gentlemen, others. Paul, you're on time.
I'm going to get checked out.
You made it clear. So can we just have some sort of action points before Paul leaves? What's going to happen? It sounds like really you've got to get some dates. Does that work for you, Paul? And then everything revolves around when these subject matter experts are available.
And also, we need to get approval from the town commission to spend money.
On a budget.
And I will, I will check out that Rhode Island. Get everybody.
Yeah, we'll follow up on all these, you know.
Okay.
So I just asked that if, if the board members know of anyone who would be interested in the committee, think about that, forward that to Renee. We can reach out to them for the purposes of having a commission action with specifically-named individuals who maybe want to participate so we could get that formed at the.
And we need to be ready for the commission meeting the date of March.
March eighth.
Right. So that, because we want them to prove a thing.
Right. In that case.
And I hope everyone got their appropriate invitation to the Behind the Hedges party on the twenty-seventh.
Next week.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Can I just add, we have one more question. We need to kind of consider perhaps the size of this committee. I mean, if we have twenty-five people on it, it won't work.
Agreed, that's a great question. I didn't offer my services, but I would, but I didn't.
I'll drop out.
My point was, I didn't know if you only want like five people. It sounded like you already have five.
We don't need all five. But it could be ex officio or something where we could sit there if you want us to, but not. You can live at just one or two of us.
But why do you envision?
I'd say at the most, what, five, six?
Six. Okay, so you already have, it sounds like, so.
No, no, we don't have six.
Well, one, two.
So you're going to have Michael Glennon because he will accept.
Five, and Gary Cantor. Yeah, or Olivia.
And then you've got the experts.
Thanks.
And then Paul, Tom. One, two, three, four. And Gary, do you think we do that?
I know Gary.
So that's five right there.
You just need to talk to Michael Glennon.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure he'll say yes.
Yeah, so that's five right there.
Okay, list the names so I have it.
Tom, yourself.
Yeah.
Michael Glennon, Olivia, your daughter.
No, no, no. No, I, we can't have two people saying.
From the same family, okay.
I'm available with you.
Gary, so that's one, two, three, four.
I would like at least to have the chair.
And throw the chair on.
And the other thing is because I'm on class S L A.
Chair.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yes.
I guess, and.
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Put Malcolm on it. You need to lock somebody off, lock me off.
You've been dealing with this issue at the commission. Put Tom on it.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom's here. Yeah, I have Tom. And Paul.
So Curtis, there's room for Curtis.
No, no, I'm dropping out because.
You're dropping.
I could be ex officio.
There is six. I have Paul as the chair, correct? Paul as the chair. Then I have Tom, Gary, Michael, Malcolm, and Curtis. So that's six.
With that, any, does the public have any comments?
I'm all for it. I'm in thirteen eighteen North Ocean. I think for twelve years. And it's a big concern for me, just my property, which isn't that old, but compared to, you know, the original property.